Yeah.
Red the elevator. Morning, I'm gonna call it Tuesday September 5th, 10:30 a.m., special workshop. Leading to order. At this time, would you please rise for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Roll call.
Will Ferry present?
Kristi Chong present.
Sally Hunt.
Conklin present.
Cheryl McCarrow.
Well, Shaka Moore.
And I believe we will have Ms. Gavin by phone eventually. She has assumed landed at the airport and will be joining us when she gets the opportunity. Okay. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everybody. This is a special meeting. It's been somewhat confusing to all of us, including the board, because it was first supposed to be a retreat, Retreat 2-0, I believe we were calling it. And then because of live streaming it, it went to a workshop, a special workshop. The agenda that was posted on the website is the agenda that we will be following. But I will be adding under 2.01, we're gonna add 2.02 for public comment, since it's necessary for a workshop. So, public comment will be available after 2.01, which is very shortly. Before we get started, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome to the table two of the FSBA professionals that are here to assist us through this conversation. And that is Mr. Riker and Dr. Vogel. Would you please join us? Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. With Kristi's absence, we are going to lean on these two gentlemen heavily to keep us focused. This is an open conversation for the board, so please, through the topics, feel free to contribute in any way, shape, or form you'd like to. And then make sure we stay on track. We got this timed certain to 12:30. If we get done sooner, that would be fine, but I wanna make sure we are finished by 12:30. Okay. Now, I am gonna open up the floor for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? Yes. Okay. Jolynn, you wanna introduce yourself?
Sure. Well, Pastor Jolynn, me, and I wanna thank you for the opportunity. I don't really have a prepared statement, other than that over the past few weeks, that Flagler County schools have gone through, let's just say, a horrible deal. And if you're not gonna say that's not tried by fire, I don't know what is. So, I just want to share as a public community that we're here and a community servant, that I adore the work and completely support Mrs. Moore, her role as term superintendent. I think she's great to our communities. She looks out for all of her students. She has such a heart. She's been here, she's immigrated here, she knows what we need. And I just want to let you know that I fully support if that's a decision that you guys are gonna make, that I support it and it has any weight or value. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Guys, did you wanna wait till later or now?
Just right now is fine. I couldn't concur more. It couldn't be said.
Come on up. Come on up.
Oh, well, it's like you guys have been under a test by fire, and there are so many, so many of us in the community that are so glad to be included by the board, to speak and considered. And it's a change, you know, from something that caused a crisis out of the blue to be dealt with, and the open communications that have been offered by Ms. Moore, various and Sunday groups that do have a concern in this issue. So, once again, thank you. To campaign.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? I think that was only two I had to see. Okay. That's great. We're gonna go now to the three schoolwork workshop agenda. The items listed there, 301 to 304, are the items we did not get to at our first retreat. Community engagement, communication, talent, business, and finance. At this time, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Riker and Ms. Vogel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, good morning, and it's a pleasure for us to be here again as we move forward with this process. I do know y'all have a busy schedule. I think you have a 1 o'clock meeting, a 3:03 or 3:30 meeting, and then a 5:00 or 5:30. So, Dr. Vogel's agreed to kinda keep us on track today, so we do finish on time, so we'll keep up with the schedule. As the chair has mentioned, your agenda calls for discussion regarding four major items, which are community engagement, communication, talent, business, and finance. After we kind of run through these areas, we would like to ask Ms. Moore to kind of review her first 100-day entry plan to kind of wrap up the process. But as we begin on community engagement, we would like to ask Ms. Moore to respond to each area, just a general statement or overall statement, her thoughts on that area moving forward. And then we'll follow up with any questions that, or any more specific questions that each board member may have. So, hopefully, we'll have about 20, 25 minutes for each of the four topics, and then we'll have Ms. Moore wrap up. So, if that kind of fits the plan of the board, we'll move forward, so.
John, may I just real quick?
Yes.
This is just something that's in my mind that I just wanna offer. I may be alone in this thought. I would love for kind of the lens or the feel of this time we have together, 'cause when you say like, "We're gonna discuss," and then Ms. Moore, it, again, it takes on this tone of like interview, right? And I don't know that, I don't know that I was aware that, you know, Ms. Moore should've, Superintendent Moore should've been prepared for an interview. So, I guess I maybe I wanna clarify, 'cause I would love to hea-, of course, I would love for her to be an active part of this conversation, as she should be. I just, I don't know that I wanna have this tone that she should be thinking she's answering interview questions. Is, I don't know if that's a fair thing to bring up. Is that the, is that what this, is that what this session is, or is it, are we having a conversation about Flagler Forward, essentially?
Yes. As I understand it, just kind of recapping these four topics and just having some brief responses from Ms. Moore, and then kind of more of an open discussion with the board between each other and/or that it might be a question that Ms. Moore could respond to.
As interim superintendent, not as a candidate.
Right. Right.
I'm confused, because I thought this was an opportunity for us to ask questions as like an interview.
That's what I think this has become.
That's what I'm, it very good.
Yeah. Kind of a collaborative, we've all had our one-on-ones.
Right.
And this is just a way, I think, the intention here is that as a, together, we can kind of consolidate what we've learned in our personal interviews and maybe learn some answers of questions that you may have asked, that I may not have, that type of thing.
That's what I thought this was.
Yeah, right. That's.
Okay. So, this is.
And I thought this was, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
I thought that, because I thought that this was in preparation for our 5 o'clock meeting. So, we couldn't have the 5 o'clock meeting discussion if we didn't have this opportunity.
I think it just became more formal, is like what you're saying.
Well, and I think when, I think I was the one who originally introduced it, and I think my ask was more that we not just have individual interviews, that we as a board, I honestly wasn't thinking about interim superintendent at the time, Superintendent Moore. I think I was thinking about us collectively coming back together to discuss, so we had an opportunity to discuss outside of like being at the dais. Listen, I don't, like, all of this is fantastic. So, I mean, I just wanted to kind of have a good understanding of as we set out to approach today, like what really.
What the goal is.
What the goal is. And so, like, I'm good, I just kind of.
Yeah. That's what I thought this was.
So, it's a, it's a conversation.
Exactly.
It's a, it's really, it's a conversation. It's not meant to be a formal interview.
I see it's more of a conversational interaction.
And of course, it will, it's influencing us.
There's gonna be some questions that come up, because of exactly what Mr. Ferry said. Not all board members have heard the, what board members brought up in individual interviews, so those would naturally come forward.
Yeah.
So, board members should ask those questions.
Okay. Okay. In my mind, I, we were coming this morning to have a discussion that, for me, was like the final stage in this interview process. So, I'm just being transparent about what I thought I was walking into this morning.
Yeah, and I think it, I think it is, I just, I, maybe I'm just asking that we keep it a conversation.
Conversation.
Conversation. It's maybe just to ask, because interviews are, you know, icky.
Sure.
I find them to be icky.
Right.
Okay.
Are we good? Are we good then? So, I agree.
I, they, I, listen, I, thank you, I appreciate, I just wanted to check on that.
Yes. Thanks for the question.
So, it's more a conversation, because I know that Ms. Moore will start the conversation,
and then we can pipe in as everyone feels needed, okay?
But I just don't want it to be lost on the community. This is an interview. It is part of a process.
Part of a process.
Correct. It is a part of the process.
No pressure.
Yeah.
I'm already here now. But I, I, I think it's important to be transparent for the community to understand what this conversation is. We're just not chatting.
So, to further, to further go with that, it is being livestreamed, right? We have allowed for public comment today, right? And we are discussing things that will, of course, inform our decision later today.
Yes.
So, as part of the process, we feel, as a board feel, we are doing our due diligence to hear from the community, right? And for us to not only base our decision on what we have seen from Superintendent Moore and the time we have known her, both as assistant superintendent, you know, and beyond, or before, anyway. And so, yes, thank you, like, process.
And just to add to that, Sally, we'll also have public comment at 3 o'clock and 5 o'clock, too.
Okay.
The community needs to add it.
The other thing I might wanna say is, and John and I have been in many, many interviews. I've reached out through every interview, and the best interviews are the, that are conversational.
Yes, absolutely.
They are absolutely that, you know, and it doesn't even seem like an interview. It's conversational, and there's questions asked, and everybody's interacting, and so that's what I see this as being.
Yes. Okay.
Sorry to take a solid 10 on that one. No, it's good.
It's good.
It's conversation.
That's good.
Well, good. Then, Madam Chair, if I could, will ask Ms. Moore to kind of kick off our discussions surrounding community engagement, and kind of some of her thoughts and activities regarding collaborating with families, local agencies, other professionals for the well-being of students, and also of the district as a whole.
Good one, thank you.
One of the, the comments that you will find me saying over the last, or have found me saying over the last few years, and it's something that I believe strongly, is, and that is the importance of a school district to a community. And as we look around, and we all chose to live here in Flagler County because of some of the great things that are happening here in the community, and in order for our community to continue to progress in the direction that, that we are going, and we need to make sure that our school district is a part of that, we need to make sure that our school district is thriving, because in order for our community to thrive, our school district must thrive. It does not matter, I am someone that believes in choice, I believe in parents having the ability to choose where they want to educate their children, but right now, and probably for the foreseeable future, public education here in Flagler County will be the greatest educator of students. And in order for our community, that we all have selected to live in, to really thrive, we need our, our school district to thrive. And in order to do that, as a school district, we have to be a part of those conversations. We have to engage with our community. We have to identify as a board, who are our stakeholders? Who are those different organizations and groups that we need to be having conversations with, that we need to be engaging with, so that we can ensure that as we are working as a school district, we are working in collaboration with the surrounding community as a whole. And that is something that is very important to me. It is something that I would definitely spend some of my initial time, as I've already been doing, is really getting out and extending ourselves back into the community, into our community, to let them know that we care about their voice, we care about what it is that they want to see in our school, in our school district, and allowing them to have those opportunities. So, what committees or groups can we have as a school district that would allow for that community input on a regular basis? Now, that is for our greater community. For our families, we have to make sure that our families are always involved. They're involved not only at the school, at their school level with their teacher, but they're involved at our school level with the entire school, that they know where to go for information. But they're also a partner in, as we educate their children. And so, we have to ensure that we are working with our parents, we're working with our families, in order to help them be more engaged in what is happening in education here in Flagler Schools. Again, it is an area, over the last 20 years that I've been in education, that I have prioritized, ensuring that what we put out to our community is a good reflection of who we are as a district. And I think in the next 100 days, if I am selected as superintendent, we as a board have to take on that identity of what is it that we want to be known for. I am currently reading a book, as well as many of our staff members, and the book is called "Four." And we have to identify as a, as a board, what is it that we want to be known for? What is it that our identity will be? And then myself, as the superintendent, going out and ensuring that I am bringing, bringing that to life with our, with our district.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions? Go ahead, Ms. Dr. Conklin.
So, to kind of keep the conversation going, being an assistant superintendent is very different, I know you have come to find, as being superintendent. And in that time period, you've been with the district for a good period of time. In the different roles that you've seen now, you've got a great broad lens to see things from different perspectives. When you think about community engagement, what gaps do you believe exist? And do you have any specific ideas or thoughts in those first 100 days that you might, initiatives or things that you might do?
Over the last year and over the last couple months, what I have found, and I do not mean this in a way to be insulting, but what I have found is, it's, it's almost like we've isolated ourselves from the community. And so, going back to my initial statement of a school district being vital to the success of a, of a community, it appears that the community is growing and moving forward around us. And so, for me, I believe at the core and at the root of it, we as a district have to do the work to extend ourselves back into the community, to bring back the relevance that we should always have, but bring back that relevance by extending ourselves into the community, being a part of the many community events that are happening here within our community, that sometimes Flagler Schools does not have a, doesn't have a place at. And so, we as, as I reflect on that question, and I reflect on what I have seen over the last few years, as well as the last few months, is the community is working and working together, but we as a school district, we have to do our part to extend ourselves back to that community, so that we can move forward together.
Okay. I just have comments. I've had a chance to follow LaShaka a lot throughout August. I attended the PTO as a liaison a couple weeks ago, and she came, and she was very engaged with the community, and just speaking to parents and the staff. I thought it was just great. And I, just as somebody in healthcare, I know a lot of times people, they just wanna be heard, they just want somebody to listen, and, and she was there to do that. So, I, I mean, she's had the ultimate interview, I feel like, already in the first month, so. Yeah. Just wanted to say a positive note, that I know she's already actively putting herself out there in the community.
Sally, anything?
Well, I was just gonna follow up on Dr. Conklin's question. When we talk about the community, one of the things that has been a big focus for me, you know, so every time I have spoken with Mayor Alvin, I talk about how Flagler County is an ecosystem, right? And I say, "We have to have affordable housing, so that we can have people who bust the tables at the restaurants, that the retirees wanna go eat at," right? And I mean, we've gotta be really thoughtful about this community as a whole. And so, when you talk about being a greater partner across the community, I think about the players like a Greg Blasey at the Chamber, I think about Mayor Alvin and their plans. Mayor Alvin, I don't, he shared with me at one point that the, our median age in Flagler County here is actually quite a bit higher, right? And how do we lower the median age, so that we, we do have a good balance of working professionals and retirees and whatnot. And what really ultimately those conversations come back to is A schools, right? And what I'm so interested in is where, where is that balance of caring about the individual student, and their life, and their progress, and their success at an individual level, while also being very mindful of the metrics and the game, if you will, of achieving that A school status, which is how we attract doctors, which is how we attract families? I mean, that's really kind of the game anymore, is that with the internet especially, people are looking at safety, which falls under Sheriff Staley, they're looking at crime rates, and they're looking at school grades. And so, I think, and this is not really honestly, not meant to be like an interview question as much as truly, I think that that is a key piece when we talk about being a good partner. So, not thinking necessarily about the family aspect of it, but about the, you think about the Board of County Commissioners and that aspect of it. What, I don't, I'm gonna stop talking, but, 'cause I think you're picking up what I'm laying down. So, I just would love your thoughts on how we go forward with that.
Absolutely. When I decided to move here with my family, that was something that I looked at. And so, when we have conversations around attracting maybe a younger age group of individuals, they will be looking at where their, their children will be educated. And so, our ultimate responsibility as an organization is to provide our students with the best education possible, and to provide to our community an education system that they can be proud of, and be, regardless of what is happening, and I know this will, this is kind of in communication, but regardless of where a, a community member is, be it you have children in the school system, you do not, you, maybe you have grandchildren, you do not, you don't know anybody that's in the school system. It is our responsibility as a school district to ensure that we're giving them something to be proud of, and we're giving them something to pay attention and focus on. Oftentimes, there is this idea or thought that because our median age may be an older median age, that those individuals do not have an interest in the school system, but I don't think that that is the case. I think that we have to continue to engage every range of our community, so that they understand what we're doing and what is the impact that we as a school district have on the environment that they live in, the impact that we as a school district have on the safety of our communities, the quality of care that they receive, the workforce that we have that's available. So, regardless of where our median age is, and, you know, of course, we, maybe the, the thought is that we wanna lower that median age, but regardless of where it is, our responsibility as a school district is to ensure that we're providing students with the best education possible, and therefore giving the community a, a school system that they can be proud of, regardless of if their children or grandchildren or someone they know attends schools here.
And let's be honest, right, I'm sorry.
Well, please, and then I've got just one follow-up.
I was just gonna say, let, you know, let's be honest, the rating of your school district directly impacts property values, whether you have children in the school system or not. So, everyone benefits from that. Other, you know, of course, students in a high-quality school district benefit, but every property owner benefits from that as well.
The, the, I have said to many people, and I believe it with my whole heart, the superintendent of Flagler County is the most important job in this entire county. And I completely believe that, because it impacts crime, it impacts property, it impacts, you know, your, you know, your leadership of this district impacts everything. So, I, let me, 'cause, let me be a little bit more specific. As far as specifically school grades, 'cause I can tell you what, where my mind goes to, right? So, we have state standards. It's my understanding, education today, teachers have maybe 20 standards they have to check off in any given lesson. They have maybe 15 minutes to check off those state standards, but there are objectives for the, for the class. So, I guess my question is, under your leadership, and I'm gonna be really transparent here, the previous administration, when I ask questions like this, the response I would've gotten was, "Well, the way that schools are graded almost isn't fair. It's not a true reflection of progress." That's not what I wanna hear, right? I wanna hear, we, we care about the individual student, absolutely, and we're also, in order to reach that A district, we are gonna tighten up to make sure we are covering all of the standards, right? To make sure teachers are prepared to manage classroom time, to, you know, cover everything. I also, from the previous administration, my feedback was, "Well, we are above state average," right? I'm not okay with average. I'm not okay with any C scores. So, I guess I wanna know, 'cause everything you said was, was brilliant. I just wanna know specifically, as the person in charge of all of it, what are the action steps? Specific action steps of, I, I, and Superintendent Moore, I don't even, to be honest, sitting here right now, I don't know all of our school grades. I think I've heard that we have, I know in the past FPC was a C, I think, but now might be a C, I don't quite remember. But what are the specific action steps of, of school grade improvement year over year?
So, one of the things that we focus on, really beginning this year, is really around that tier one of what do we provide to all students in order to ensure that their academic needs are met? And oftentimes, when you speak to educators, they think around tier one, they think about instruction, they think about really just what the teacher is doing in the classroom. But really, tier one is any and everything that you do for all students, to ensure that all students can have access to what the teacher will do in the classroom. And so, that really starts with ensuring that we have standard operating procedures for how behavior is addressed on our campus. It ensures that our faculty and staff have clear understanding of what their job roles and responsibilities are, and that we are eliminating barriers that prevent them from being able to do that. But at the heart of it, we have to ensure that every year, that as students are progressing to the next grade, that those individuals are proficient in that year, because every year that they are not, that it puts more on what the, that teacher that they're going to has to then recover. And so, as a state, you have seen that this, this really, this focus on early childhood learning, and ensuring that by the time that our students hit third grade, our students are on grade level. A big shift from that has also been that we've been looking at reading and our literacy, but this year, we are now also looking at what math deficiencies look like as well. So, our teachers have to know the standards, we have to provide them professional learning to ensure that they know the standards. We have to ensure that they have high-quality resources that address the standards. And then we also have to ensure that they have adequate time to plan and prepare in order to go in and teach those standards within, within their classrooms. And so, you know, there is not just this one thing, other than, I mean, we have to focus on ensuring that our standards are taught in the classroom, that we're monitoring the instruction that is being provided in our classroom, and that every year, our students are moving forward with a higher level of proficiency year over year. But we have to really look at the whole system, and how the whole system plays into our teachers being able to go into the classroom and do what they need to, to do. Dr. Conklin?
Shaka, could you, for the benefit of the public and the benefit of the board, could you share a little? you share a little bit? A little bit, right, of the historical perspective in the sense of the impact that changing standards have on an entire educational organization? What happens and kind of the progression, right? So, you know, you, you have teacher, you do a lot of professional development, a lot of training around standards, and then the standards shift and the standards change. Everybody has to be reeducated. Curriculum has to be reevaluated. Can you talk a little bit about the impact in the last two years really with the shift in standards and, and assessments as well?
Yes. So over the last few years, we have had an update, and all of our standards are in a cycle to be updated. Right now, we are currently implementing new, new ELA and new math standards. We have in the last three years implemented new ELA resources as well as new math resources. Remembering that our standards are a guiding force. It is what we are, that is what we're teaching. That is what our obligation is. Here's what we're teaching, our, our, the curriculum that we adopt, here's the, the resource that we use in order to teach those standards. But as Dr. Conklin stated, absolutely, when we have a change in standard, we do have to really provide some intense professional learning around what the new standards are because we do not want for individuals to think that there is this crosswalk, right? They're, oh, they're, they're, they're the same, but they've slightly tweaked and they're not the same. We have to make, ensure that they know what those standards are, but we have to also provide them professional learning on the resources that they're utilizing in order to teach those standards, to ensure that any resource that we're putting in front of our students are great appropriate resources and they are resources that are going to be used to teach the full extent of the standard. And that really goes back to, you know, what the board has really allowed for us to be able to do over the last two years with front-loading, some pre-planning days, to be able to provide that because we do have a limited amount of time. And so we have to be creative on how we provide that professional learning to our, our, our staff, but it's job embedded. So it's not something that you just give, you can't just give it all to them at one time, but it's, we have to continue to provide that support to them over the course of, of the year, also ensuring that not only our, our academic coaches and the supports that we put into our schools know what the standards are, they have an understanding of the resources, but we also have to ensure that the administrators that we have in the schools, that those are instructional leaders. You can find so much research that will support, outside of the teacher, the next important person in a school for academic achievement is that principal. And so we have to ensure that as we're providing professional learning to our educators, we're also providing professional learning to our administrators as well, so they can be great instructional leaders so that as they are out in classes and they are seeing learning taking place, they know that it's good learning, it's, it's good teaching, good pedagogy, because they know the standards, they know the expectations that our students have. And they may not have them all memorized, but what tools do we give them that they can use and refer back to? So when I go into a classroom, I know this is the standard that you should be teaching right now, this is what the standard says, this is what it looks like, and this is what I'm seeing happen in the classroom as I'm in that classroom right now.
Just one, we're, we're a little bit out of time, but I think this is really important. I don't want to leave it. Now, what you're asking is, is certainly something we're not going to get a, a full answer right now, but the timing, you, you still don't really have all the information from last year's test.
Yes, we're still waiting.
I was going to ask a follow-up on assessments.
But what you're asking would be, the timing, when, when last year's assessment results come in and you actually see where all the schools are, then that would be a time to continue this conversation so you can see where you are. Because you mentioned the word baseline, then you will see, because there were no learning gains last year either.
Absolutely.
And that is really critical too. So I think, I don't want to move off of that subject, but the, but your question would be one that I would think we should hold.
Absolutely.
If that sounds all right.
I mean, that, that could be a whole retreat.
Yeah, Dr. Vogel.
But the timing is close. I don't know when they actually, October.
Well, and the understanding too, that because of the new standards and assessments and the need to develop a new baseline, that school grades were not issued, what was it?
Yeah, we'll get a preliminary unofficial grade, but we, we will get some information on that this year.
So Dr. Vogel, before we move on from this, I just want to say, you know, Kristi made a comment, I just want to make a quick comment. What I appreciate in Superintendent Moore, one, she's a lifelong learner, which is everything. So you hear she's reading, she's keeping up on, on things. She also, time and time again, I hear from her, she's not okay with average. And so to your point, when that information comes out, I know wherever she sits on leadership, she, she is a great person for us to have to be able to meet us where we are and take us to the next level. So, thank you.
I just, I don't want to do this every, every time, but I did have a couple of observations. One thing, I think, Ms. Moore has recognized is the difference in the job between deputy superintendent and superintendent. And that, I, I heard her say that. And I think, to me, that's one of the hardest things when you transition to that role, because when you're deputy, you're fixing, when you're superintendent, you're leaving. Okay, so that was it. I think the other thing I observed was that there really are not a lot of other choices for people than Flagler Schools right now in this district. And you want to reach out to all the parents and make sure they know that Flagler Schools are the, the schools that everyone needs to go to. And I thought that was really a plus. The board and you stated that you want, that, that, that it's very important that not only are you the instructional leader of the county, but you are a very important community leader too. And she's already said that role too, and I think that's critical and what the board wants also. So I, I, I feel that, you know, and if everything that was said was consistent with what the survey said too, I've been trying to monitor that too.
Just a quick, will you have something?
Yeah, and we're still in the community engagement, right? So I, I did have a question on that.
We're behind, but we're good.
The, you had mentioned, Ms. Moore, that, that Flagler Schools has maybe isolated itself in a way from the community in certain ways, right? And I don't necessarily disagree with that. But since you've been interim, what types of engagements have you made with the community? And what was the feedback that you got from those? And what would that look like going forward if you were given the role as full-time superintendent?
One of the first things that I did when I became interim superintendent was reach out to our Flagler Education Foundation because they have a great pulse with many of our, our, our community members. And, and essentially said, if there's a place that I need to be, you let me know and I'll, I'll be there. But I've also reached out to something interesting. I, I've had conversations with pretty much everyone that during the conversations from last year around our community members who had a comment or concern from the level of our former leadership, I've reached out and had conversations with those individuals to say, let's have a conversation. Tell me, what is it that you as a community member, as an organization, what are those things that you're, you're missing? I've been to different organizations, you know, that have either invited or I've asked, I've met with almost all of our county leaders, our, our managers, I've met with our law enforcement officers, just really starting with those municipalities and, and reaching out to them to say, we're here, if there's something that we can be a part of, let me just tell you a little bit about Flagler Forward and where we are. So really taking from a wide range, but also having conversations with parents and community members who just send me an email and have a comment as well. So making, really making room for any of our stakeholders that are there, but also starting with some of the key players here in our community through some of our city managers, meeting with them on a, a regular basis, some of our city and our county leaders are the places that I've, I've started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Something that Ms. Moore commented on a few minutes ago, understanding that school principals are one of the primary factors in student achievement outside of, again, second to the teacher in the classroom. But that kind of segues into the next area of communication, that there's kind of, from our experiences, we see two major areas of communication from the superintendent's chair, and that is to district and school-based administrators, and also communication to and between the board, from the board members to the superintendent, superintendent to the board. So if Ms. Moore could talk a little segment on her thoughts on communicating with school and district administrative leaders, and then a comment or two on communication to and between the, the board and superintendent.
The great thing is that Flagler Schools is still small enough that we can have and we should have very personal relationships with the leaders of our schools so that they know that we're here for them, not just from the standpoint of providing their professional learning, providing them direction, but also to, to be with them in whatever it is that they are experiencing on their campus. So for me, it is through frequent conversations, be it phone calls to check in on them, text messages to check on, in on them, district communication of information to them on a regular basis, but also going and visiting with them in, in their schools. And, and that is something that has been a huge ask of our administration. And so right now, today, we're the 17th day of school, and I have been at, at each of our schools at least two to three times, really prioritizing that in the way that I do my work, because I know that our time will be taken up with lots of different things. And so really working with the administrative assistants in the superintendent suite to make sure that I'm there and I'm on campus is, I'm my best self when I'm, I'm with students. And I am an educator through and through, and if you walk the halls with me, I, if I, I don't know all 13,000 students, but I know quite a few of them. And that's important to me. I want to ensure that when I go to schools, that not only our, our administrators and our staff know who I am, but our students know who I am, and our students have a voice, and they know that they can come and they can have a conversation with me. We're small enough still, that that is something that we can do. So that is something that is extremely important to me. And then for the board, I really, I, I think that's where the board is going to have to really give that feedback on what is it that they want to see in my communication to them, you know, be it a once-a-week check-in of here's the, the happenings for the week. But I, I try to pride myself in being a good communicator, even if it's a quick text message or a phone call or an email, but I think that's where it's going to be important. And when we start identifying what the workflow will be, is what the, what does the board want to see in the communication? And it may be different from different board members, what is the, what is the need of the collective board, and then what is needed from each board member individually, especially when we first get started. If I'm the one that is selected to lead this district, then that's going to be important. It's going to be important that we are, we are communicating on a regular basis so that I know that I am going forward and doing the work of the board the way that the board wants it, and I'm reporting back to you in the way that you want. So I think that question really is about, you know, what, what the board wants and how I can provide that.
A lot of that would, you know, whatever happens moving forward, going through master board is really a very beneficial process with the board and the superintendent. It's just a really helpful process that FSBA provides.
You know, two observations that I have. One thing, I, I love what you said about visiting classrooms. To me, that's the most important, one of the most important things to do because it's, you might not know all 13,000 kids, but all 13,000 kids will know you. And these kids, when, when the superintendent comes in their classroom, when they go home at night, they say, mommy, daddy, guess who was in my room? This is Moore. The superintendent actually visited my classroom. And that is really huge, because I've been in places where nobody even knows who the superintendent is. And I think you, you have a lady here who is going to be, they're going to know who she is.
I was just saying that last week, I had an opportunity, I was out visiting schools, and I went to Bellteor Elementary School into a class, and I'm there and I'm watching the learning, and a student walks over to me and she said, she, she asked me a question. She said, I would like to take you over and share with you our social, our contract for our classroom, what the expectation for our classrooms are, our classroom is. And so she took me through the be kind, and she went through every one of those things. And then she looked at me and she said, now, if you agree to this, then I want you to sign this. And this was a kindergarten class, and I'm like, absolutely. And the teacher captured the picture, but what she said was, oh my goodness, the superintendent is signing our classroom contract. And that's important to me. It's important to me that when we're out and I'm in schools, and I know those of you who had, have had an opportunity to be out in schools with me, it's important to me that our students know who I am, not because I'm the superintendent, but because I am someone that is responsible for their learning. And they, I want them to know who I am, I want them to know that they can come, that is one of the great things that we have here in Flagler County, is that we teach our students about their voice and we give them an opportunity to share. And I will tell you, even this year, I've received an email from a student that says, Ms. Moore, I would like to schedule time to talk to you about this. And I said, no problem. And anybody who's worked with me, they know that I'm going to make time to do that. If I don't do anything else, I'm going to make sure that I go out and I'm, and I sit with that, that student, because, I mean, that's important, that's important work for me. And I, I need the board to know that. If I am selected as, as, as a superintendent, that is something that I have to prioritize. I can't lead, and I think that you guys are considering me as the, as the superintendent for Flagler Schools based on the way I've led. And I can't lead if I can't be where kids are.
The other thing too, that I always like to say is this, is that kindergartners and first graders love surprises. Board members and superintendents don't.
Very true.
Okay, and I think that Dr. Conklin said it very well, when you go to master board, that, but you're going to, but that's something that I've always thought of and I've always remembered when I was in my superintendent days. And that really, just by thinking that, about that, that, that kind of kept me aligned on what my job was, to communicate with board members and board members communicating with me. So I'll just leave you with that.
And I can attest to that, being an HR director, that if there were issues with staff, I would immediately expect that call from Dr. Vogel, call, he would say, call every board member, give them an update, see if there's any follow-up that I need to make with them. So communication both ways is, is very important and feeling good about working as a team. It really is.
Absolutely.
It is.
It's critical.
And I'm glad that you used the term team. I think that's something that I have to also be very, that has to be at the forefront of my mind, and I've had several board members to say this to me, is making sure that I am including the board as much as possible in the, the day-to-day things of the district. And I know that you can't come to all of it, but it, I feel it is extremely important to invite you to see some of the great things that are happening on our campus and, and what you have entrusted me to go and lead, lead.
Excellent. This, because this is the leadership team right here.
Absolutely.
Comments, questions, communication, anybody?
I, I have something just real quick on this one, just to share with my fellow board members. A couple of, of things from the, the previous school year. One, I just want to commend Superintendent Moore. I had a parent who had reached out, whose daughter was really struggling in like an Algebra II class or something like that. And I happened to reach out to then Assistant Superintendent Moore, kind of at the same time that I reached out to, and I, just full transparency, I'd also reached out to the current superintendent. And I got two very different responses on that. From the current superintendent, I received a response of, it is what it is, they're going to have to figure, and this was a family in crisis, like the, the child, the student was really... was a family in crisis, like the child, the student was really struggling, and there was a lot of emotional anguish that was happening. From the current superintendent, I got, you know, they're going to have to figure it out. And actually, I then also talked to, I happened to also talk with Mrs. Moore about it. And she was going to reach out to the mother. She said that there were some things that were possible, and it was just a, the contrast was so stark. It was, and I guess the second piece I want to share along with that is, another piece of information I received from a key community member was that they missed their district. I think Flagler Schools has a history of having a lot of heart. There being a strong culture, and people caring about one another and heart. And I think that when we talk about this piece, I think there has been a little of that, or a lot of that, missing. And what I see from Superintendent Moore bringing back, you know, not only, I don't even like to use the word competent, it's such an understatement, but not only to be so strong, but to also have the heart that comes with it, which, Superintendent Moore, you talked about us being a small community. And we are. We're a small community. And so when I think about this, I think about the heart that you bring, with also the high level of, for lack of better words, strength and competence. And so I just wanted to share that with my fellow board members, that everything that you are saying, I have observed and heard within the community, that that is a need, and you fit the bill. So I wanted to share that.
Yeah, I would concur with that. I mean, that was very clear at the kickoff. And just the energy level, and the excitement, and the welcome, specifically to you standing in that position. And so that was, it was good to see. It was good to feel.
It was a great day. What people expect, people who have worked with me, what they know of me, is that, you know, it is important to me that we provide the support that they need, and that we also give them the tools that they need, and the information that they need in order to do their job. That is something that is big for me. What is it that these individuals need in order to do their job and do their job well? I think we often want to have accountability for things that we have not provided the direction, the support, the understanding for. And so for me, I want to ensure that the individuals who work for Flagler Schools, they know what the expectations are. They know what it is that they need to do their jobs and do their jobs well, so that when it is time to have a conversation of accountability, we're all on the same page.
And again, Madam Chair, if I could choose, move us into the next area.
Well, let me see. Let me see, does anybody else, any other comments? Do you have anything you want to add? It's Dr. Conklin.
Is that okay? I was just going to add, or ask. Kristy kind of mentioned it a little bit. One of the things that I, it's not a worry, but it is a, you are best when you share your authentic voice. We've talked about this. How can you ensure that when you step into the role of superintendent, you maintain that authentic voice? Because the authentic voice is what people resonate with, right? And as Kristy mentioned a little earlier, sometimes, we may not like it, that people bring their issues to social media. We may not, it may be impossible, right, to keep up with. But it is a form of communication, and people do share. And sometimes, it's just missing information, right? And then people fill in information, the worst-case scenario. And then a little small thing becomes a big thing. How, as we're talking about communication, how can we, and it may be an impossible question, so I apologize, but how do we make sure that people feel heard? Because a lot of times, it is just that, right? People just want to know they're being heard, and that their voice has value. So how do you maintain your authentic voice in responding to some of those things, and either staying up with them, or getting ahead of them? And the reality is, social media is part of our world today. So as a superintendent, do you have any thoughts on how you maintain your authentic voice, how you listen to parents, and gather from whatever mode of communication? And then how possibly does one moving into the next century engage and communicate with parents, so that they know they're being heard, and not just ignored?
I've
That was a lot.
Being in many different positions, I've had to, I've been impacted by social media many different ways. And my first response is never frustration. My first response is never frustration. My first response is always, have we provided them with the information? Have we provided them with ways in order to ask the question, get the answer, whatever that is? I think that is our first response. Our first response can't be frustration, because that's where they go to vent, or whatever. But we have to know confidently that, one, we've provided them with the information, we've provided in a clear means for them to be able to access. We've provided it in more than just one accessible form as well. We have to first have confidence in that. We also have to do a better job of really telling our story. And the more we tell our story, and really highlight the great things that are happening on social media, I mean, we highlight them on social media, and on our website, and other ways, the great things that are happening in our schools, I think the less that noise will feel. Because our stakeholders, again, we got to give them something to be proud of. We have to give them something to really connect with us on. And as they connect with us on that, you know, and they know the part that they play, and that they're in invested interest in this part, you don't typically tear down your own house, right? You don't typically just say, I'm going to set up your own house, right? So, but are we ensuring that people know that they are truly a part of this, that they do have a voice? That, you know, are our administrators at our school level, are they responding in a timely manner? Are our departments responding? Are we giving them an opportunity to voice their concerns, or voice their ideas even before they become concerns? Are we providing all of those different means for people to be able to communicate, so that when I do have a frustration, my first thought isn't just always, I'm going to go to social media, and social media only. People are going to still go there, you know? But if we've provided the information, there's always going to be somebody, one that's going to say, well, hey, did you get the email that they sent? They sent out an email about this. Or, hey, I know this information is on our website. And so we have to make sure that others can help us tell the story, and share the great things that are happening, and share even the information. We have some critical, critical key players of parents that are in many of these groups, that are always providing the accurate information, because they know it. They're following. They see it. And so they're providing that. We can't tell our story by ourselves. We have to ensure that we're giving the information to all of our stakeholders, so that they can tell the story. So that when someone comes, and they're frustrated with a community member, you know, I think about the community members who have stood up here today to have a comment. When somebody comes to them, and they have a frustration, you know, our community members, who are active stakeholders in what we're doing, we got to make sure that they have the information, so they can say, well, no, I don't think that that's how that really is.
Exactly.
Yeah. And so my first, my first response is never frustration. My first response is always to push and ask our team, have we provided them the information? Have we provided it in a different way? And when it comes to my authentic voice, I have to lead the way that I know to lead. And, you know, I don't know if this is safe to say, but some of it has to come
Yeah.
from within me, and who I am, and who I'm called to be, and the assignment that I'm in right now in life. And I have to lead that way. And I think our team is seeing that. They saw who I was as Assistant Superintendent, and there's a role to play when you are, you're not the first, the head. But I think our team is adjusting, and they see how I lead from this place. And, you know, I'm confident that they will follow. And if they won't follow that, then I'm sure that they will find something else to do. I don't know how to best say it. But I have to, I have to lead authentically.
Well, I want to encourage you to continue to own your voice, and to continue to use that, in whatever leadership role you continue to go forward on. Trust your gut. I think it's going to take you in exactly where you need to go, the right direction.
I agree.
All right, we can move on to
Yes, ma'am.
Three.
Right, jump to the next section, which is talent, kind of the human capital area. And again, Ms. Moore, you've touched on it a little bit in several of your statements, but if you would talk a little bit about the expectations that you place on staff. You talked about, you know, principals communicating issues timely, the parents are responding appropriately, in a timely manner. And so expectations of staff, and then holding the staff accountable, and this managing the talent that exists here in Flagler.
Again, it goes back to, we have to provide individuals with what they need in order to do their job. They have to be provided that, they have to be provided that directly. That comes through not just, not only just professional learning, but it also comes through ensuring that they have written procedures to follow. I think it's an area that we, as an organization, have struggled in, in my observation, over the years. So we need strong, written, standard operating procedures for individuals to follow, and be able to be able to do their job. But again, we have to give people a reason to come and work for Flagler Schools, right? We have several individuals that live and reside here in Flagler County, but travel somewhere else in order to work. Well, why is that? You know, is our pay competitive? I think that it is. Do we have good benefits? Do we provide them with the information that they need in order to do their job? Are we providing them with job-embedded support? Do we provide mentors? And this is for anyone who works for our organization. But also getting to the root of something that this board has talked about for a while now, is those exit surveys, and having a conversation with individuals who are leaving our organization, for them, for us to understand why they are leaving, so that we can help improve that for the next individuals that are coming. But also, not forgetting those individuals who have been longtime members of this organization, and surveying those individuals as well, to ask why they stay, and to ensure that those things, that those reasons why they are staying, that those are things that are embedded through our entire organization, to make it very consistent for individuals. So I think we have to look at it from a lot of places. But those individuals that are leaving, making sure we have a solid exit interview for those individuals. That is not a passive exit interview, exit interview, but an exit interview that really helps to capture their voice, and what it is that, why they're leaving, so that we can improve on that, identifying what causes people to stay here in Flagler Schools, and then improving our process for how we onboard individuals when they come. Looking at the percentage of individuals that we lose, you know, in the first 90 days. If they're leaving within the first 90 days of their employment with us, we have to know why, like what is happening there. You know, I just think about, even recently, we lost a teacher who, you know, was like, you know, I can't, I have to go and do something else. But for me, you know, I wanted to know why. Tell me a little bit about it. And there were a few things that I took away that we can improve, but some of it was just on that individual, that they wanted to, they wanted a change in career. But we have to know for sure why people are leaving, and not just guess why they are. And I think we capture that through exit interviews, stay interviews, and ensuring that we have proper onboarding for our staff.
Questions, comments? Dr. Conklin, just some thoughts. And if you don't have an answer on this, I just think it's something we need to probably start really seriously thinking about. When we look at retirement, the number of people in the next five years that are going to retire, we look at the low number of graduates coming out of post-secondary programs, for especially education. Thoughts around, how do we address that? I mean, you've got more and more folks not going into education, and we've got more leaving, not just retiring, but also looking at other educational options that are out there for them. And so it almost feels like this tsunami is swelling, right? And it's been for a number of years now. But with choice and opportunities, you have teachers that are leaving to do learning pods, and all sorts of creative things. So I think culture and climate is part of it. But any thoughts on how we address that moving forward?
I think some of that work is being done really at the state level, with creative things that they've put out for extension of drop, also looking at alternative certifications. And that's all important. When we look at alternative certifications, and the many different ways that individuals now can come in and be a teacher, we have to make sure we're providing the appropriate professional learning and support for those individuals, so that they can be successful. Because they're typically coming from a different organization, different arena. And so we have to make sure we provide them with the professional learning that they need, and the job-embedded support that they will need. But you mentioned learning pods, and I know that this came up in our one-on-one interviews. But education, the landscape of education is changing drastically. And so if we, as an organization, if our plan is to continue to educate the way we have for centuries before, we will work ourselves out of a job, essentially. And so we have individuals that are going to do learning pods, and we have students that are learning in different creative ways. We have to also change and have some flexibility in order to allow for that to happen, not just for our students, but for our staff as well. And I think that is where the landscape of education is changing. And you have some larger counties here in the state that are starting to kind of tap into some of that. But that is something that I'm excited about, of really looking at, if selected as the superintendent, over the next 100 days, is really looking at what are our opportunities, what are the many different opportunities that we provide for our students, as education is changing, but what is also, what are the opportunities that we are providing for our faculty and staff, in order to be able to do their job in a different way as well? Because education is changing.
That's exciting. I just have a follow-up on that, and then I'll stop. Because I wrote it down, but I was going to wait till the end, but since you brought it up. I'm excited when I hear your thoughts around creating opportunities that are kind of outside of the box. So could you talk a little bit more about thoughts of diversifying the educational opportunities, given choice, and what that looks like moving forward? And I totally get that that's an evolving conversation, right? The only conversation this board has really had an opportunity to slightly engage in is the possibility of an alternative school. But it goes way, 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 way beyond that. So I'm just curious, and I'm glad to hear you say, if we keep doing what we're doing, that is not going to cut it. So, you know, the exciting part around choice is it gives public education an opportunity to really fully take advantage.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I know as a teacher, as an administrator, as an assistant superintendent, there's got to be times in your career where you're like, oh, if I was superintendent, I would do this. If I was superintendent, I would do that. So do you, and again, I know that'll evolve, you know, over the time period, but any ideas and thoughts you want to kind of just share, that maybe you've had, about what this could possibly look like moving forward?
Absolutely. And that takes us right back to that first point of that community engagement. I think one of the ways that I'm most excited about is really working with our community around workforce, and identifying areas around workforce and identifying areas that we can bring classrooms and learning opportunities beyond just the four walls of our schools, but outside. Again, providing different options for our students that are traditional, our traditional public school students, but also helping to capture some of our families that choose to educate their, their, their child at home or in private or charter wherever. We have to, you know, it's, it's not enough for me to just come up with that idea of, that learning opportunity, but what is necessary? What are those first things that we can address as a community that will benefit not just the school system and ensuring that we are keeping, um, we're keeping connected to our families that choose different options, but we're also meeting a need that our community has. And so, what are those needs that our community have? I think, I'm excited when I think about Advent Health and now having two hospitals here, I think of space that may be available for us to take learning into the hospital and that we could allow for students that are maybe at homeschool or in a private sector to come and be a part of that. So, it's, it's not, it's, it's all about ensuring that we are keeping up with the changing landscape in education, but we are, we're ultimately meeting a need for our students and our community. Ensuring that our students know that when they graduate from high school, they should graduate from high school with something else, right? You should have some type of industry certification. You should have, um, you should have other things, you know? Do you want to go to a state college? How do we connect with you with dual enrollment? How do we connect you with trade opportunities that's through Flagler Technical College? I'm really excited to, to work with FTC more and to help to provide some different opportunities for our families. But it's not just about us keeping up with the changing landscape. For me, it's about what is the need that our community has that we can, we can feel and we can feel in a creative way that we haven't always been able to fulfill it in now that we do have universal choice within our, within our state.
Yeah, I think the homeschool, you brought it up a couple of times, is a whole new opportunity. And I'm really glad you brought that up because there, there's a lot of ways. You're absolutely right. And that's.
Absolutely. And, and again, not just for those individuals, but I think we're going to see the need to change what education looks like for many of our students. And so, we have to be creative and take advantage of an opportunity for us to do that.
And I think Ms. Moore has mentioned exit interviews as well as stay interviews, but with exit interviews, we determined, we found out in my previous district some time ago that lunch duty for instructional for a teacher was a big, big deal they did not want to do. We simply then said, okay, what is our solution to this with input from teachers? We went and go with that what we called a duty assistant, that the, the school decided to forego one instructional assistant and split it up into three thirty percent duty assistants to basically take care of that lunch coverage. You know, so those exits interviews brought that issue up. It's, it's what kind of got it, got the ball rolling. It also brought up the job share for instructional staff and some support staff, which, which we implemented.
We tried that several years ago.
Last year, we did resurrect job share and we continue to work through what that looks like, but again, we, we, we have to come out of the mindset of just traditional.
There was very popular way back in the day.
It's definitely, it's definitely coming back. And I want to make sure that.
That's exciting to hear.
Yes, yes.
I didn't know we were dabbling with that.
Yes, we, we definitely are. But ensuring that we also provide an opportunity for our families to have that exit interview too, when they're leaving to go somewhere else. And not that they have to say to us, but again, I believe in choice, but I want, I want individuals to choose to go and educate in a different way for an opportunity that we don't provide or we can't provide. I don't want them leaving us to go somewhere for something that we do provide or out of frustration. And we only know that when we are, again, we, we have our ear to our stakeholders and we're giving them an opportunity to, to have a voice.
All right, anybody else? Okay. Moving on.
Yes, moving on, very good. Right on schedule. Uh, our last area is that of business and finance. And Ms. Moore, you could kind of talk about any thoughts you might have on establishing some fiscal practices that would maximize funding that is available? And then what's that funding your budget is set? How do you kind of ensure that departments are realizing their biggest gain from the funds that have been allocated to them?
Going back to ensuring that people have the information they need in order to do their job. And so, being very transparent with where we are as a budget, you know, when it comes to our, our budget. And we've started that work this year already because of a peculiar place that we are in, but ensuring that our schools, they know what their budget is, where we are as a, as a school district. Because our, again, our faculty and staff, especially our leaders, our department leaders, our directors, our administrators, they can help us be fiscally responsible, especially when they know, when they know where we are, when they know what the expectation is for, for our, our budgets. And so, um, really looking at what is our, our process now? You know, we talk about, um, you know, zeroed out funding, bringing it all the way down to you're going to itemize every dollar that, that we have in order to ensure that we are being more fiscally responsible. And that's an area that right now we are definitely knee deep in and finding ways that we can help improve our fund balance, finding ways that we can educate our direct, our leaders, our directors, our superintendent cabinet, um, our administrators on where we are financially and also doing that with our collective bargaining agencies as well to ensure that they know where we are fiscally, fiscally. So that when we begin to have a conversation around finances, we are all at the same starting place. There is this, sometimes this assumption that there is more money, you know? People, you know, hear that we got a lot more money this year in our budget, but do they really know where those dollars are allocated, how they're allocated, what dollars are used for what different projects? That's important. I've always, I've always felt that way and I, I've always led that way to say it's important that we educate as many people as possible around key items and our budget is one of them. It cannot be just senior cabinet and the board that knows where we are financially. It has to be all of our stakeholders so that when we begin to have conversations around things financially, they know where we are, they know what to expect. So that individuals don't think, that they don't feel that we are not willing to, um, you know, go the extra mile or look for another creative way, but sometimes the answer just has to be no. And we as an organization, we're in that place right now where we really have to be conservative with our dollars. But we do that by educating all of our faculty and staff around where we are financially.
Alice, talk about your budget process. I know you really have come into the budget that is pretty much already developed. What kind of process does, does the board use and how has the board become involved in the budget? Because it normally starts probably in January. And that might be helpful for Mrs. Moore to understand.
Lately, the board has not been involved, however.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
Yeah, in years past, in years, we were. The board was highly involved where every department would have to present their budget. And I think we may be going back in that direction due to the necessity.
That's been the request right now from the board.
That, that we actually have to meet and they will present the budget to all of us, each department. And then it's, we can tweak it or whatever, but it actually was, I thought it worked very well because I participated with it at that time. And it made me aware of where my money was, how much money I had, what I was going to be able to spend. And it goes along with what Ms. Moore was just speaking about, knowing, you have to know. And if you don't, you know, I think knowing they were presenting that, it put every department on notice that they had to know where their money was. Plus, it helped us because then we knew where the budget, budget money was. So, that's what we've done in the past, but not recently.
Yeah, I, I know a few years ago, I, I know, I heard a presentation, I think there was a process that was used. I was pretty impressed with what it observed, I guess, for a search or whatever we were there for. But I, but I didn't know if this more had been through an entire process, maybe as an assistant superintendent, but not a superintendent. So, that's why I brought it up. Might be something that you all talk more about in the future, about what process you want to use. Because normally it's something in, kind of in January.
And there's some good processes out there that are like, I'm, I'm racking my brain trying to remember, Boulder Dad, well, um, what is the, it's a, you can, you can be a certified, your finance can be like basically certified that it's gone through this process.
Yeah, it's escaping, it's escaping me. I just, I just sent the article to Ms. Warmick about it, yes.
But there is, there is a standard for accounting for schools that you can go through. That's a pretty rigorous process.
And there's some budget counters out there.
Yes, I just literally said, I heard that, an email about this.
Baldridge, oh, that's going to torture me.
I don't know if that does that, but it, but it's something, when you come in as a new superintendent, you know, I was in that situation, you mean, you kind of, here's what I've got to work with, you know, then how are we going to go from here?
And Dr. Vogel, if I can just share, I mean, this is something that has come up, especially recently. I, I think whether it's master board training or whatever, um, that we need to find a balance as that collective, I think you called it the leadership team of the, the roles and responsibilities. There has been some heat, I would say, as far as is the board stepping on the toes of operations, right? But also, the board represents the community, right? So, if there's a concern amongst the board of where we are with a reserve fund balance, if there's a concern from the board around operational efficiency, do we have more staff in certain areas do we need? Are we holding people accountable, you know, for their responsibilities or are we hiring another person to make up for their shortfalls? I, I think that's a big thing that in order to move Flagler forward, we, we need to get ironed out of, um, that it is, it is the board's right and responsibility to, to weigh in on the operations. I think there's a disconnecting kind of, we don't have the right to tell them, to tell district leadership how to do it, right? Like that falls under what they do, but I think we, there's a disconnecting that we do have the right to say where we want to see. This is what we want done, right? Like on behalf of the community, we want to see this and this and this. And so, that is a big piece, I think, around this, that we need to get ironed out of how do we work together.
Well, that ties in with your strategic plan. And I know that's something you're working on and then how the, how you're going to, your budget's going to provide dollars to do which in your strategic plan. I know that, that's, that's going to, you know, be part of the process.
Basically drives the forces.
Absolutely.
I think where, where I've seen danger happen is when board members do try to direct operations because you can't do that. You can, and the, and the community can have an, an opinion, right, on how certain things are done. And as board members, we can share that opinion, but that's about as far as it goes, right? So, there's, there's policy, there's accountability, there's advocacy, there's financial responsibility that would fall under your accountability piece and then community engagement. But the operations piece directly, the operations piece, that is, that is probably the biggest challenge in, in, in the relationships between superintendents and boards.
And again, if I am selected as the next superintendent, I think it's important that even before we look at policy, before we look at our, um, your board manual, we really just go to the statute that outlines very clearly what is the role of the board, what's the role of the superintendent, you know? To, to make sure that we first know what is required of us based on the law. And then from there, are there policies, are there workflows that we need to adjust to ensure that we are all, again, we know what we need to, we have the information in order to do our jobs and do them well and we can have an appropriate working relationship and workflow. But for me, and I, and I print, I've spent a lot of time on this of, you know, annotating it, circling, looking at it, looking at what my verbs are versus your verbs and all of those things that, that mean that, because that is important. Because to me, I've been saying to the organization that we're resetting the table. And I had to clarify that when I say we're resetting this table, we're resetting the table for a fine dining experience. You know, like this is not, this is fine dining experience. But to do that, we have to go back to the foundation. And that foundation comes from the statute that outlines what our roles are as a board and what my role would be as superintendent.
I think that's, that's an outstanding answer. I really like resetting the table. That's, that's fantastic. And from there, you, then you work together to figure out how, how it's going to work. Yeah, that's good.
Some things we don't have to come up with. It's right there already in black and white.
And master board would help with that too.
The master board is outstanding.
Thank you, Senator. I think we're kind of at the point to kind of let Ms. Moore, I know she's brought it up a couple of times about her first hundred days, but if she could kind of give a brief overview of where her thoughts would be and what some of the things she would like to try to accomplish in the first one hundred days? And then any closing comments she would like to make and that would kind of get us through our agenda items.
I'm in a very unique position because I am already within the organization. You know, for some comes pros and for some comes cons. But for me, when I think about a hundred days, um, if I am selected as superintendent and if I'm not selected as superintendent, um, and it's somebody that's coming in that is not a part of this organization, I would share this with them as well. When I look at our organization, we've experienced a lot of change and not that that is bad, but sometimes change causes us not to have a strong foundation. And for me, one of the most important things that I have to do if I am to lead this organization and be successful is really around the stabilization of our organization and looking at standard operating procedures and ensuring that we, we have standard operating procedures, that we have processes in place that will uphold the policies that you as a board have, you already have to make sure that we are in line with our, our state statutes, our laws, our board rules. A lot in education has changed in the last even two years. And so, that has to be for first and foremost because if not, it's going to cause a lot of other things to begin to crumble around us. So, we have to, we have to stabilize our organization and we have to ensure that we have standard operating procedures that address the policies that you have as a board, our state board rules, as well as our, our state statutes. That's first and foremost. Tandem to that is to me very important that I continue to engage with the community, that we bring back our relevance to this community. Everyone will agree that we're important and I, I use that term, that we're one of the most important organizations to the advancement of a community, but we have to reclaim our relevance. We are important and people will say that we're important, but are we relevant to this community and we have to bring that back. And the only way that we do that is extending ourselves into our community and working collaboratively with the leaders of this community in order to move Flagler County as a whole forward in the right, um, direction. That is, those two are really, um, uh, number one for me. And then ensuring that we have the right people in place in order to ensure that academic achievement continues to move forward as an organization, that we have individuals and roles that will also have a vision for this organization and that will take pride in this organization and help to move it, it forward in, in its entirety. And then really spending as much time with you as a board, you are critical to my success. And then really spending as much time with you as a board, you are critical to my success. Right now, taking on role, the role of superintendent, you know, there may be several people that are like, why in the world would you want to take this on? You know, I live here in this community, I've lived here for a long time. There is a risk that comes with that as well. And you as a board are critical to my success. And we have to be able to work collectively and we have to have a common vision in order for us to really move forward. Again, most people don't burn down their house with them inside of it, for sure. And so we have to work together and I know how important that is. And so it's going to take spending time with you each individually, spending time with you as a collective. I will ask that we have several retreats so that we can identify what our workflow is, so that when we get to November and we look at reorganization, we've had many conversations around what that could look like so that we are successful and we can ensure that we not only have a district that runs efficiently, but we also have board meetings that run efficiently. I want to be respectful of your time, I want you to be respectful of my time, I want to make sure that our meetings are orderly. Again, I want to ensure that we as a school district, we're giving our community something to be proud of. And in order to do that, to me, two things that have to happen side by side is stabilizing the organization, ensure that we have standard operating procedures that will uphold the policies, the state board rules, as well as legislation. Also working in collaboration with our community so that we regain our relevance here in this community because our community is moving and it is moving quickly. And so we have to play catch up on those relationships, ensuring that we have individuals in the right place and they have the vision and they have the excitement to dream of what education looks like alongside of me and then really working with you as a board because again, there's a risk that I take by saying yes, there's a risk that you take as well as a collective by saying yes to me. And if we're going to be successful, we have to be on the same page, we have to know that we can work collectively together. And we do that by actually doing the work and doing the work together and spending time together individually and as a board in order to give our community something to be proud of. When we say Flagler forward, we talk about Flagler schools as a district, but it's about Flagler County as a whole. And if we're going to be a part of the four motion that our community is having, if we're going to be a part of that, then there are some things that we have to do together as a board in order for that to come to pass. And so that's what my 100 days will look like. You know, and again, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, I respect the decision of the board to, I mean, it is your decision. If I'm not the person that is to lead this organization, that's fine. What I ask is that we work collectively together on that so that we do not cause additional turmoil to our community or to this organization. And that's, that's all I have to say.
All right, does anybody else like have a closing comment now? Meg, where's your?
Public comment or our closing comments?
No, our closing comments.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I'd just like to say that this has been, again, very informative. I'm glad we had this collaborative conversation about this. I just want to remind the community that we all have interviewed Miss Moore one-on-one. I had myself over a two-hour interview with her.
Over two hours?
And of course, before that, when we interviewed her for to be the interim. So we have invested a lot of time because I think we all would agree that this is the most important decision we're going to make for the future of this organization at this time as a collective board. So, and tonight, we'll make a decision on what this is going to look like going forward.
I'll just commend Miss Moore. I know you've got a lot thrown at you in this month and we didn't see a lot of it coming, but you've handled all of it with grace and I just commend you for that. I don't think another person could have come in here and handled things the way they've been handled. Even though it's been, we've all gone through a lot, I still think that we're heading in a positive direction and I'm looking forward to see, you know, how things turn out tonight.
I don't have anything to add right now, just, I mean, thank you. I guess I will just share maybe a little bit like what Will said. For transparency, I spent about an hour with Superintendent Moore, a pretty intense conversation. It was, I don't want to call it an easy conversation. And she just continues to wow me, for lack of better words. And I will just share, I have worked with some of the most incredible leaders literally in the world in my life. And to be so impressed by Superintendent Moore, it says a lot to me, right? Because I have worked with some just really incredible people. And so to Will's point, we did have a very intense time together and my takeaways, the things that she said, her thoughtfulness, it was really incredible. And I don't know where the vote's going to land tonight, but I'm so excited that we have you to consider for this position. So thank you.
I would echo what a lot of comments that have been made already. I was going to, I'll share again tonight, but I was reached out by a few members of the Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber Board, what is it? Chamber.
Chamber.
To share their support as well for you in this position. I think there's a lot of members in the community that are very excited. I will say, this is very reminiscent when Bill DeRoux came on board with that energy level. And I haven't seen that specific piece in a really long time. And it was just really powerful to see how our team from transportation, custodial, to our teachers in the classroom, to administration, the energy level and the enthusiasm and the receptiveness to you stepping in a leadership role was a really beautiful thing to witness and see. You've really had an interview by fire, literally, and have managed some very difficult, probably some of the most difficult conversations that in the 23 years that I've witnessed. And you've handled them with class and grace. And again, I would continue to encourage you to use your authentic voice. It will never take you to the wrong place. But I'm grateful that you've been sitting in this seat to weather those several situations with us. I appreciate the communication, the reach out, the understanding of the real importance of having a team, a leadership team at this level because it is so critical and it really does trickle down. So great discussion. I hope that moving forward, we can have more of these kinds of conversations. I think they're really beneficial, but just appreciate you putting yourself out there because I know you have a lot to, you know, this is as much of a gamble for you. So I appreciate you putting yourself out there for this opportunity.
When the transition from assistant superintendent to interim superintendent was to take place, I was told by your predecessor, don't worry, Cheryl, she's sound. And I wasn't sure exactly what that meant. I know it now. She was basically telling me that you could handle it, that you were ready, that you could weather the storm, which is obvious, which you have done gracefully over the last week, two weeks. You opened school with more energy than I have seen in many years, okay? And that's huge in this district because that's the culture and climate that we like. I believe that you bring to the table everything that this district needs and it is by far the most important decision this school board will make, by far. I don't know where the response will go this evening, but I know that as your predecessor said, you are sound. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our guests because with your guidance, we're getting to a place where I think we're ready. And it's been, it's been a trial because we've done certain things, we've all met, we've all seen a lot, heard a lot, and we've heard from our constituents. I think that's very important. And I'd like to thank you both, Meg. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board because you've all done your due diligence. It's important that you go through these steps so you feel comfortable because whatever the outcome is this evening, we need to be ready to move forward, whether it's with Miss Moore as superintendent or it's with the process of finding our next superintendent. But we need to do it as a team and I think that we can, we can do that. We can definitely do that, I know we can. So with that, I would just like to remind the public that we have two meetings scheduled. There is a three o'clock meeting, it's going to be open, public comment, which is our normal workshop meeting in this room at three o'clock. And then we have a five o'clock meeting, I believe will be downstairs in the dais because that's where we have to first approve the budget and then we will finish our conclusion of our conversation about Miss Moore as possible superintendent. Again, there was a public comment there. So if you wish to join us, please come. At this point then, I am going to close this meeting and call adjourned.